Bad shape for guy wanted to absorb all the money that we just took for it. We just decided to abandon that part of the event and we're just gonna almost everything within the confines of the archery range.
So. Well, we abandoned the for this open house and we're still thinking about if you can do that.
Yes.
And we were wondering if maybe if it's a great doubt at the back top of the archery range, maybe we can build backstops on the field back there with dirt. Instead of that, they're there permanently. We ain't gotta take it and set them up, take them down and stuff like that. If we're not using them, they're not hurting anything. Just it would make it easier for us. It's kind of really what it is. That's something that's really gonna perpetuate anything or anything like that. It's something that would give us future expansion, future ideas to use out there. The whole idea behind the park was to make a place for people to go shoot archery and do it in the same place and it's a whole place. That's kind of remind who kind of expanded that a little bit if we can.
That's one of the things that we're researching, you know, obviously since we're not in such a rush this year to do it now. That now we have the ability to take this next whole year again, look at the choice that Ken just mentioned along with some other. Possibilities, but that will, once we come up with an idea that we like, we'll obviously bring it to the city council's attention and give a proposal. What we want to do and see if it's something that the council will approve of or whatever, but we do have some ideas at this time. Expanding into those wooded areas if possible. So we haven't abandoned that yet. So with that said, also in that letter that I gave you guys, we're Ken and I, along with a few couple of other people. Have done all the maintenance and everything to the targets down there and you know, in trying to do some capital improvement. We've been rather resourceful over these last couple of years on the expansion items that we've done down there, but. We're kind of getting to the point where we purchased those three big targets, they're expensive targets. And they're being deteriorated from the sun. So we're trying to figure out how to preserve them and not waste our money that we spent on those targets. And Ken came up with a couple of different choices and so did I. And there's a rubber matting that they produce for archery ranges. Four foot by four foot sheet of rubber, polyurethane, not polyurethane, it's a rubberized compound. But anyway, it's gonna be a sheet that you'll hang over the front of the target and over the back of the target. So it that those. Layers are covered. They're not exposed to the sun anymore. Plus the fact that we're gonna have to build wooden frames around the outer perimeters of them along the sides, along the top and then the drainage down the bottom. So these rubber sheets will be on the front and on the back to cover up the fullness there now. So we can prohibit that sun from deteriorating that anymore. So we can get a lot more length, life expectancy out of those targets. The rubber that we found a couple of places online is about thirty dollars sheet of four foot by four foot sheet by Corbett. You can have have two sheets per target with six or four targets or three targets down there that we need to build.
Six sheets.
Yeah. We wouldn't have six sheets that.
Like what we'd like to do is just buy a sheet and try it and see if it works, see if it does what we want it to do. And if it does, we would propose getting the other five.
So the sheets come off, use a target and then you're supposed to put them.
You pull them on, you fasten it to the front.
Shoot you have it on the back.
Okay.
Shoots right through it.
It's a self healing type rubber. If you're anybody who's familiar with archery, the last five years, they come out with these new rubber targets that you can shoot at. This rubber sheet, just as an example, has like, I guess, a thousand shots.
But all that is subject to whether you're using broad tip or field tip.
And obviously.
We don't our tires.
And we know a lot of broadheads down there. There's a big sign down there. It says no broad doesn't mean that some of them won't do it, but.
Right.
So, but to encase all of these three targets in wood and then to. Get the rubber and see if it does work. If it does work, why, like Ken said, we're gonna think on one sheet right away here. We'll clean it up and we'll use it for this fall.
And if it does. Two sheet, one target.
Well, we just do the one side.
Just do one side.
Just to prove that even works. We don't do that. We don't know the viability to it. And I don't wanna go buy five because I know they don't work right now.
So we're just doing what we're looking at is if everything works accordingly, we'd like to have the ability to go back and then go ahead and rebuild. Frameworks around these three large targets and then purchase the covers for front and back.
You need, you know, do you need like two hundred and fifty dollars to get up and going?
Well, here's the other aspect too. We're looking at or researching different avenues of fundraising too. This open house that we're gonna have, thought about putting up a free will donation jar, whatever.
All money would just be.
And all of that goes to the archery improvements and stuff like that. So. With that, I guess we wanted to introduce and let you guys know, the citizens know what we're doing, what's been done down there. And what we're looking for forward into the future here.
I think there's quite a few people that are already using the archery range. I mean, the amount of wear and tear we've got on the targets tells me that there's a lot of people shooting down there. Some of the wear and tear also tells me some people are shooting broadheads yet.
Yeah.
Like science, the people don't seem to be able to read that. I don't know what.
They make targets that you can shoot broadheads and target arrows into, but those targets are.
One of my hundred bucks.
Well, yeah, they're most expensive are. There is one out there that I just looked at today. It's four foot by four foot. Or take that back sixty inches by sixty inches square, it's like inch and a half thick. And that has over one thousand shot, I think I can see.
Oh, really?
But you're spending hit the boat two hundred bucks for that target.
Oh, and other, everything else sold up? There's no vandalism stuff or anything?
Well, Reece and I have talked about addressing that issue, about vandalism and stuff like that. We've kind of come up with a battle plan that hopefully will get that aspect resolved or have a little more insight what's going on.
Although you asked, we had a problem with Scott gambling.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
I know. Past years there was.
Well, just as an example lately, I brought sheets of tin down there to cover up that second tall tower. And I left a small bag of screws sitting on the cable wheel. Went back three days later and screws were gone.
Yeah, but they're nice enough laid to steel, which is good.
Yeah.
Well, first of all, on behalf of the council, I wish to thank you for moving forward in all this and keeping it going. I, my own opinion is here that we don't wanna have another PID thing here. This isn't really council sanctioned. So what I would like to do is give them the authority to turn stern receipts in. You know, that if you buy something for two hundred bucks or whatever, three, three dollars or whatever. That you'll turn the receipt in and be reimbursed.
In fact, I just spoke with John earlier today about doing just that.
If we can, if we can authorize, we can authorize that expenditure. You know, we, we thought we had PID under the auspices of the city. We didn't. I don't wanna go up there again. I wanna have, you know, you understand. Yeah. So let's. If that would be agreeable with the rest of the council, I'd be, I'd be all for that. I mean, I mean, I think it's a, a good thing. I think it's something that. They are the volunteers. They should keep doing it, you know?
And the other aspect too, as you read in that letter, in the past, always created that archery range on that. We had people throughout town shooting in their own private properties, which some still do, but most of it's now no longer there. And the biggest thing is there's nobody shooting down the ball diamond anymore or in those woods like they used to.
Yeah. Upgrade for communities.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, somebody wanna make a motion to that effect that Tom, if they produce receipts to us, bring them to us and they'll get reimbursed. Somebody might make that more.
I would say like up to five hundred bucks.
That's right. Yeah. That will get you down the road this fall.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Then you have the authority next year as you investigate and do more and all those kinds of things, but. We're not, we're not in, you know, we're not specifically insuring or anything like that. You know what I'm saying? We're just, all we're doing is reimbursing, you know, and we're, we.
We feel we need to bring it to your attention while we're doing it. It's a city property.
Yep.
Yeah. All right. So somebody wanna make a motion for that effect up to five hundred dollars?
I'll make it.
Tom made it somewhere. Second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. And again, thankful to you for all your work. Is it just you two?
There's, there's, there's other people on the.
Oh, yeah.
So it's not, it's not Scott's.
Yeah. All right.
You, you.
Put the first roof on that.
Yeah. You, you guys will be the contacts, you know, for us and then, you know, we don't, we don't really have to. You know, and be involved in meetings or anything like that.
Thank you.
I forgive you wizard, Dayton, I'm. Yeah, so all this points out, I think, to Pam, we need to agree. The flyers should be done tonight, so get it unposted here and posted throughout the town.
Everyone will be required to sign the waiver before they can participate.
I have them all right here. My will be in these forms.
Yep. Thank you, guys. All right. Unfinished business. Are there any other details under community comment? We can move on to unfinished business. Wellhead five thirty Sherman disappeared over the last couple of weeks. I've got a copy of the minutes from August seventeenth of twenty twenty where, you know, we were in the purchasing process and all this. And we told the people that that property would be built for Wellhead. In fact, Councilor Prom made the motion. To do that for a future well site. So we have to proceed with this, right? To search out, putting a new wellhead in down there?
Oh, I think it should be, I, I think we should be engineering it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. So do we invite Jeff out here or somebody for next month and get moving along forward?
Yeah, maybe it could be tied in with that report on the I and I.
Yeah.
Yeah, would that work?
Yeah. 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 I guess, you know, we'd like to see, get some cost estimates.
Yep.
The, what, I mean, our old well still has a hole in the casing, right? The old one, the little one?
It, it works. I mean, we used it during the water tower project, but.
I know, but it's never gonna get any better.
No.
And how much money do we put in a two inch well casing?
Yeah, really.
You know?
Yeah.
So if we.
Cap on that one and.
If we do what we decided in twenty twenty here and put a well down there and run it back up to our here.
Will be, will be good to go.
Would be good.
For almost anything that happens in.
So, yeah, add that to Jeff Dahmer's and. All right. Burkhardt, Burkhardt mid-year review. They were just here, right?
Yeah. They was at. I learned a lot just sitting through that few things, I believe. Paul Burkhardt was here doing the field work with Luke. I don't remember his last name. And I think he said Greg will be reaching out to us probably due presentation, probably at the September's meeting. The biggest thing I think that they came and you'll notice if you're looking through, so the way. This has been a learning process, but I was doing. Since we only normally meet once a month, bills are only approved once a month. And just depending on that timing, we could run into late fees. You know, and just where's the invoices aren't being timely or paid actually timely, you know? So Paul suggested is, you know, what you do, should be doing is. If you receive an invoice, so it was July, he said, if you receive an invoice in July, you pay it in July, you post it and do everything in, in that month. But then it's, the question is you come into that gap at the beginning of the next month before the meeting. And he said those, you know, so if you receive an invoice that is due, that it will be, would be due before the September meeting is you do. You process those in August. So when you look through your packets, you should see a, there's a check register for July and there's a check register for August. So they're, they're separate, just the way we're doing it. That was probably the biggest. That it really helped me get organized on how some of the, how we should kind of set up the filing for Sue. So we've been working on that. But I think overall it was, it was, it was good. There was no, no, no major hiccups that I remember anyway. So.
Good. All righty. Sounds good. That's under unfinished business. Anybody else have questions for Kurt? I guess we'll get to report next month then. Moving on to new business, LPL Old National reinvestments. Two hundred and eighty thousand, seven fifty six.
Yeah, this is for the investments that they hold at eighty is from. An investment that just matured and he's looking to reinvest. That two, two eighty was paid out, I think it was a. Did you say eighteen month? I don't remember if it was an eighteen month. It paid out at two point two five percent. He can reinvest that now, that two eighty at four point seven one percent and was just wondering if we wanna. Do you wanna increase it? Make it like an even three hundred to rein, reinvest or do we wanna just roll at two eighty?
Oh, maybe we should increase it. I agree with you.
Yeah. I mean, we could go three and even three hundred. We could go three twenty five even. It'd be a little over a year maturity. Have you checked on CDs and stuff? I have. I haven't moved on it. Community Bank, I didn't bring those out. They had a, they had a, it was like five point. Oh, one APR for a nine month and. Minster and Lake Crystal had a twelve month for, it was around, or ten month, I think. Around five point one ish.
So five was it?
Yeah.
And I think we gave direction before to search out some local banks for some of this, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
And this is.
This is, this is, what's in that LPL?
No, but eighteen months.
Uh, I don't think it was full eighteen months. I think it was about fifteen. We could do. Do that two hundred and eighty thousand or if we wanna raise it up a little bit, cause it's almost, almost doubled in value from the interest rates, but.
You said for up to four point seven one, right?
Or you go five with CD. I don't know what's, you know.
Yeah, but we would have to, we would have to withdraw from the LPL account.
Right.
It'd probably be something.
Well, is there a lot of money in the general ledger right now? I mean, is some of that, should we just renew this with these people?
Yeah.
And take some of that other general and go to Vernon or Minster or whoever.
Yeah.
And. Or both. Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and make some money on that money. Well, it's good.
Yeah. We were holding off on some repairs and some work here this year. So, you know, we, we have. Maybe we'll make some money on that money that we're sitting on.
So you just wanna go with the two eighty nine with, with LPL?
I would suggest a three hundred.
Other three hundred or whatever was going back over to, to a CD then?
I'd just make it even money like Tom said, three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. And then like out of the checking account. I mean, I, we, we should certainly be able to take it for a million out of that.
That's what we were talking last meeting. I think we even acted on that.
Yeah. Then we're after it with Minster.
Oh, you're gonna, he was gonna investigate and he did. So it's like five percent.
Yeah. Wouldn't, I wonder, would they give more if you gave all of it to one or the other, you know, instead of one twenty five to each? Two fifty to one. Does it, the dollars make any difference, I wonder?
I, I didn't get into specifics. I was, I don't, but I, yeah, I don't think so.
Okay. Well, you wanna make that a motion, Tom, to, okay, how about out of the general ledger, quarter of a million?
Yeah.
And reinvest in both places?
Yeah, that would be, I, I think we should do that.
Yeah. Okay.
Support our local.
All right, small. Tom made a motions. I'm in a second.
I'll second it.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. And you and Sue will work through.
Yeah.
Transferring this and all that. Okay. All right. IT support and scanner. I think that's what we already talked about, right? IT or are we on something else?
No, we don't have a scanner.
Oh, you mean.
Documents right here in the office.
Oh. That kind of.
Be hard when we're trying to get established. With.
It doesn't work.
Things.
A hundred and seventy five an hour. They gave in directions on how to do it. We haven't had any luck in converting that over. But, he said, he suggests one, cause he's so big. Play what, three fifty bucks? I don't remember how much Sue.
You're sitting in there. It was like four fifty to five hundred or one of the ones that Burkhardt, Burkhardt had. And it's just a small one sits on your desk and it'll just. For both sides.
Tell me, wanna make a motion to get a IT support scanner at whatever.
Slow move.
Five hundred?
Slow move.
Someone, Tom made a motion. Someone a second?
I'll second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried.
And what we're gonna talk on that IT support is kind of what.
No, the guy from Badger. I forgot his name. No, whatever his name is.
That, that computer does move awfully slow and I don't know in the past if there's been somebody that we've had IT support with. But just somebody, one, maybe get it, have somebody look at it and clean it because it is, it is horribly slow. And it's, that's way out of my.
I defraged it last week and it did help a little bit. Took a long time to get it to reboot again, but we don't, we gotta be careful with the update. If we can't update our windows because of the Itron.
Right.
So.
Just all those IT questions that I can't answer, you know?
Who can answer them?
Well, that's what we need to find, see.
That's, I mean, yeah, I mean, they've got Marco and Mankato. I've mentioned them before. I didn't reach out to them. But I mean, and I don't know if that's something we wanna. Start doing or you wanna wait until we do figure out what we're gonna do with the water meters?
Well, that could.
Because we really can't, I don't know how much we can do with this one. Cause obviously it's probably not running on, I don't know if it's running on the current windows or the Microsoft. I don't know if it's running current or not.
I'm assuming it is, cause it does run.
Okay.
We can, how about if we just, we'll shop around and we can come up.
Search it out.
Okay.
See if you can find somebody that can do whatever needs to have done. All right. Miley reimbursement? I think I seen that here for Brian.
Yeah. So in order to let the paint dry on the water tower, we kept the regulator for two extra days. They moved on to the next project down in Rose Creek. Down by Leroy.
Yeah.
And so talked to Reese and I said, if the, we were trying to figure out what to do. Try to get one of our old regulators working again or whatnot. And I said, ask him if we can have it for a couple of days and I'll drive it to him. So on Friday of last week, I drove down to Rice Creek, which is down by Leroy and I dropped it off with them and drove back. So.
Move to prove.
It was eighty, eighty-six miles one way.
Yeah. Tom made a motion to approve at Miley's expense. Someone a second?
Sorry.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. Minnesota certified municipal clerk certification?
So this is all for to get Sue three year period on. To get certified through League of Minnesota Cities. Just planning to move ahead with that. I don't know, I don't know if that just necessarily needs a motion or what else we're gonna talk about. I forget now. Looking, oh, there was a, one training, I think it's in September in St. Paul, but I was saying. It probably be better if she was, and gets her feet a little bit wet, waits until her feet a little bit wet and then attends sometime in the spring.
There was always that one in the spring.
Yeah.
Yep.
Sounds good. I agree. Or notary?
So I do have to apply for my notary stamp. I do have the paperwork, but I need, it needs a hundred and twenty dollar check. So the question is, do I pay for that or does the city? Because it's for city business, I'm assuming.
The.
Or do I pay for it?
In the past, the, you paid for it individually. And then that way there, it's your notary. You can use it as you wish. If the city wishes to pay for it, then we can put the limits on it. We can just say only city business.
Business, yeah.
Or whatever, you know?
We talked to, I did email Sheila Huber regarding that and she stated because the, it's a requirement for the position that the city would usually pay for that. Then yes, it stays here. It's for city business. It's, I mean, it's not, it could still be open to the public, but it stays here.
Right.
So it's during working hours, whatever. Yep.
Right, right.
So however the city wants to.
Would it be bad? Would it be just strictly city business?
Well, I would, I would say. I would be all for paying for it and it's, it's a city notary, but it's for community.
Yeah.
So I mean, if, you know, somebody comes in, they need something certified because they're open on a bank account or whatever, whatever the hell it is. And it's doesn't relate to city, but we have a notary that she can do it. And then since the city paid for it, there's no charge then to the individuals that come in off the street. They would, you know, but then it's also something that she would keep here and, you know, she wouldn't be out notarizing documents on, you know.
It would be done, yeah, during work hour. I mean, it would be something that, it would be something that we, it's a service to the community, basically.
Yeah. Many cities do that.
I think they gotta just keep track of who they do.
Yeah, yeah, there's a log.
There's a log. Yeah. Yeah. And then, then we would have the right to look at the log and all of those things, you know?
All. Notaries would have a log of business they've done for.
You should have, if it's, I, I mean, there's supposed to be a lot, whether you're a city clerk or whatever, if you have a notary stamp, you're supposed to have a log of.
Okay.
No, I don't know if you need to turn it in or not, but I know there's.
I don't know if you do either, but you're supposed to have. And I know I read that. So.
So your decision on the cost?
It's just one twenty, I think.
Yeah, it's a hundred and twenty.
I'll make a motion.
Yep, I'll make it a motion.
John made a motion. Someone a second?
I'll second it.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. Okay, clerk office access?
So we've been talking about, so there's only one key to the clerk's office.
Just get your lock done with it.
But Sue and I've been talking, it's. Should there be a second person that has access in case there's?
The attorney told us to do that.
Oh, he did tell? Oh, absolutely.
That, no.
Yeah, we've been told wrong all these years and, you know, okay, all right. We definitely need access.
So if you just get another lock, it'll have two keys with it more like anyways.
Would you, would you do a key or would you do a keypad? What is preference? Anybody got a preference?
I think a key is fine. Key is fine, I think too. You know, but someone, you know, whether the mayor, someone else needs to have a key or someone else appointed. He was actually shocked that we didn't.
Well, like you said, we were misstrued for quite a few years that nobody could have, right? And we, you know, we got that ironed out. So, all right. So we're gonna get a new lock. Race? They don't get a new lock?
I got, I have a handful and probably have multiple keys. So.
All righty. That's under new business. One thing I was wondering.
Do you want to assign who's gonna have that key or do you wanna just table that and deal with it once we get the lock and once we get it installed?
I think it should be in the mayor's possession.
Yeah, I don't think I want any keys right now.
Hand it to John.
John?
Yeah, John. Yeah.
Yeah, he knows the bookwork and all that stuff anyway.
He's had access to that office for three months. So John would be the guy.
Oh, make it, I'll make a motion to that effect. Making, I'll make a motion to that effect.
All right, someone a second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. Um, one thing I forgot to maybe say upfront is, uh, um. I don't know if, who would be wanting to, should we have a little personnel meeting after our meeting here? To.
If, if you got the time?
Yeah, it's like.
Afterwards. Yeah, I just want to make sure everything's cooking. So we should make an agenda, um, a note on that on the agenda then? Uh, we approved the agenda, should we make, um?
Man, they got a dumb dude or?
Yeah, whatever, whatever.
Go back, back it up and yeah, have a, you know, put it in there. All right, uh, miscellaneous, we have a building permit here and there are a couple of them.
Yeah, that's your original, the original has the next number if you.
One.
Yeah, it's just one.
Yeah, it's just one. And it's more offense on, uh. Order of holiday.
Then, do you, uh? Wait, me tell them. Are you familiarizing yourself, Race, with the building?
Cold and dry.
Up, yeah, okay. When people get this, do you go, kind of take a physical look at it then or?
Um, I haven't yet, but I, I don't know when, I don't know if I will, we get them.
It meets all the setbacks?
Yep.
It looks, yep.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion then to approve GT twenty twenty-three dash twelve?
I'll make a motion.
Someone a second?
Second.
On favor?
All right.
I oppose, motion carried. All righty. Anything else under miscellaneous business?
We're discussing the water. Oh, or did you put that out?
Yeah. It gets. We'll, we'll just wait and cover that August twenty-fourth. I'm just.
Yeah.
Things we still need to investigate on a few of. It'll be like lengthy conversation, ban into kind of walk, walking.
You know. And then, uh, have we, uh, scheduled, uh? Uh. Yearly, um.
Budget meeting?
Budget, there you go, thank you.
Yeah, that was going to be the, um, that's the primary purpose for the August twentieth meeting will be the budget.
Budget two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. All right, anybody else with miscellaneous? We have one disheartening note here that, uh. We have to read tonight, uh, the Good Thunder Mayor and City Council. After much thought and consideration, I have decided to resign my position as City Councilman affected at midnight tonight, Ron Cole.
I decided that, uh, I'm retired. I've been retired for ten, twelve years and, uh. We got things we want to do while I'm still able to do it. We want to travel and, uh. Spend time with the lake, which I haven't been doing all summer, that's pretty much, and, uh. That's what I bought it for, so, uh. I'm going to miss it. I mean, I, I talked to Race today and I, Race is catching up on everything. I mean, there's going to be something coming up in the future, I'm sure, that we haven't dealt with yet, you know, but that's. Could be a year down the road or two, three. And I believe Sue is going to make it the way it sounds and the ways you, you know, going about it and stuff like it. So I think we did good there. And Brian, I don't know about him, but. He's good and ain't no getting around that. Nope, he saved us a lot of money, I think, over the years because, uh, he's got the bookwork and everything he chose for it, so. Uh, no. Like I say, I'm going to miss it and I, I'm still available, even if I'm down south, uh, give me a phone call, any of you. Well, it just, uh. Nope.
So there's a lot of knowledge having you here. As we always go, hey, Ron, how about this? How about that? You know? Uh, I guess the council and our, and ourselves will miss having this knowledge at this table. You know? But, uh. This is your choice. We, uh. Somebody want to make a motion to accept Ron's resignation then?
I'm not really.
Well, not really, no, I know that.
But by rule, we have to.
But you had to do a resolution.
That'll be, we'll have to do the resolution for the next meeting, yeah.
Like I say, I, I, you know, I'm going to miss it and just, uh, like I say, I talked to Race today and, uh, he's coming along and. And I'm only a phone call away. I'm not saying I'm going to be here at the, on the spot, but I can, uh.
Four wheeler tires will last a lot longer now.
Yeah. No shot, yeah.
So does somebody want to make a motion then to reluctantly accept his, uh? Resignation?
I'll make a motion.
Someone second?
Accept his resignation.
I'll second.
On favor, say aye.
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 Both, motion carried. This, right now, I'd like to give you a hand. Yep, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Ron.
You got cold hands.
Always cold. Yeah. Cold hands, warm heart.
Yep. Okay, if there's nothing else, we're going to have another council meeting. It won't be a special one, it'll just be a regular. We're going to talk, that's our regular, are we going to have two meetings a month for a couple of months, helps to, you get down the road? How are we going to do?
Um. It'd be, it actually would be a, a, a special meeting.
Yeah.
You know, that we can set at this meeting and then you don't have to. Post it or anything like that, because it's already posted.
The primary pur- purpose will be, uh, uh. Budget for the August twentieth meeting. Yeah, um, and then there'll be a couple of water bills to discuss and. I don't know, whatever, whatever else.
All right, so the next me, special council meeting will be August twenty-eighth at seven o'clock.